Good evening, we will call the meeting to order. Did everyone stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please.
Council Peterson.
Here.
Counselor Geisler.
Here.
Counselor Jelly.
Here.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Here.
Mayor Boucher.
Here. Uh, do any counselors have announcements this evening? Uh, short one, I've just been told in the last fifteen minutes that there's several tornadoes on the ground, a little southwest of here. Be prepared for bad weather in case it shows up. We have no public hearings this evening and no communications to highlight, no present- presentations. Item eight, public discussion. This is for discussion about items not on the agenda. If you're here to watch something that's going on on the agenda, there will be a discussion period during that time. Does anyone have any public discussion for an item not on the gen- agenda? If you do, step forward to the podium and start with your name and address.
Good evening, my name's Jim Sweeney. Um, my address is thirty-nine twenty-nine T. Lane in Peyton Acres. And I just wanted to ask, I've been in contact with the Gilberts over this project. And it's hard to get a straight or a clear answer. And I understand because they're very busy. But we're living in an, uh, on the end of a cul-de-sac where it's, it's not done. It's not cleaned up. It's a, just a mess. And, uh, I was just wondering if anyone had any kind of a timeframe or, uh, any contact with them over that. I know there's been others here about drainage, and that is a problem, and we probably did it worse than others. Um, so, but I, I'm mainly wondering about just the finished grading and the cleanup.
Uh, Mr. Mulder, uh, and Mr. Johnson, you asked about that?
Eric or David, do you have a?
One of our staff will address your concern.
Yeah, thank you.
So you can wait there if you'd like.
So, um, Mayor and, and Jim, I was out there this, um, spring with the Public Works Director a couple of different times. And the context that we were out there was looking at the drainage issue on the, would be the west side and the corrections that we are going to have, the, the Gilberts pre- prepare. On Friday this week, I drafted up a letter that I'm going to be sending to the Gilberts. I, I have not sent it yet, but I wanted, um, staff to review that. So if there's something, are, are you referring to the, um, the, the washout next to your driveway? Is that what you're referring to?
That's not, that's what other people have talked about. So I didn't want to bother with that because it's not done. I'm talking about, uh, the finished grading behind the curbs. Right now, it's just, it, a big washed out mess. And, uh, you know, it's not finished. Uh, our neighbor was told there would be sidewalk there, which, and there is none. I don't know if that's going to happen or not, if that was supposed to. You know, having been in the, that type of business myself, you know, I'm, I'm surprised that it was left like it is for as long as it has been left this way.
Okay. So, uh, I will review, uh, I'll go visit the site before I send out the letter. And we have not formally accepted the project yet. We have accepted the utilities, but I have not made final recommendation of the council for, uh, approval of the road yet. So we'll make sure that that is, um, addressed before we make, uh, final recommendation.
Uh, when would a normal timeline be this year for acceptance of that road?
I'd, I'd like to get it done in, in July of this year.
Okay. Does that help you out?
Yes, that can. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that has anything to, to discuss with the council that's not on the agenda? If so, step to the podium and start with your name and address. Is there any general public discussion for the city council this evening? Hearing none, we'll close the general public discussion and move on to motions. A motion to approve or deny the renewal of liquor licenses for the following. Maya Authentic Mexican and Holiday Circle K, contingent on paperwork being received. Do we have a motion relating to this?
Move to approve.
Motion by Counselor LeBlanc, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Geisler. Roll call, please.
Counselor Jelly.
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Counselor Peterson.
Aye.
Counselor Geisler.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Next, we have the consent agenda. Minutes, approval or correction of the June second, twenty-twenty-five city council continuation minutes and accounts payable, approved general city warrants from June first, twenty-twenty-five through June fifteenth, twenty-twenty-five in the amount of eight-hundred-twenty-thousand-two-hundred-sixty-five dollars and sixteen cents. Is there a motion relating to this?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Jelly to approve, is there a second?
All second.
Second by Counselor Peterson. Roll call, please.
Counselor Geisler.
Aye.
Counselor Jelly.
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Counselor Peterson.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Next, we have two city ordinances. First is ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash eleven. An ordinance amending chapter five, land use regulations. This is a second reading. Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Motion by Counselor Geisler to approve, is there a second?
All second, that as well.
Second by Counselor Peterson. Mr. Mulder, should we have someone from staff address this?
Yeah, Eric Johnson, our Community Development Director.
Mr. Johnson.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Uh, before us, this is a, uh, ordinance amendment to chapter five, section five-three-five, which is the Business and Light Manufacturing zoning district. Uh, so to give a little background, uh, the city has recently completed our comprehensive plan process. Uh, as we were going through that, there was discussion both at the staff level as well as with the consultant and potential language changes or any use updates to the city zoning ordinance. So this is essentially one of our, our first looks at some different, uh, pieces within our zoning ordinance. We expect that there'll be some more of these in the future sometime. Um, so in addition to these discussions to create, uh, potentially some new zoning districts within the city as part of the comprehensive plan, uh, we also spoke about adding permitted uses within the ordinance that reflect either new trends or business opportunities and where these would best fit with the existing zone work or framing of our zoning ordinance. Uh, so what we've been discussing is communication services as part of the business light manufacturing. Uh, this has been heard a couple of times at planning and zoning, uh, where there was some initial language from the staff standpoint. Um, there was some concern from the staff standpoint that some of the language may have been a bit vague, and there's an opportunity to expand on that. Uh, so, uh, staff has looked at this further, and we've added some additional language to that business light manufacturing as it applies to communication services. And that's what's reflected in tonight's ordinance.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from counselors? Hearing none, is there any public discussion or input on this ordinance? If so, please step forward to the podium and start with your name and address. Any public input on ordinance two thousand twenty-five dash eleven? Be the last opportunity for public input on ordinance two thousand twenty-five dash eleven, an ordinance amending chapter five, land use regulation. No public input, roll call, please.
Counselor Jelly.
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Counselor Peterson.
Aye.
Counselor Geisler.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Next is ordinance two thousand twenty-five dash thirteen, an ordinance amending chapter seven, special use permit. This is a second reading. Do we have a motion relating to this ordinance?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Peterson to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor LeBlanc. Mr. Mulder, uh?
Let's have Eric present this.
Johnson.
Great, thank you again. Uh, similar to the ordinance that we just spoke to, uh, this is another basically cleanup of language within our ordinance, uh, particularly in section seven, uh, which is our special use permit section. This spoke, speaks to the duration of permits. So it has always been implied or understood that when a special use permit is issued, it actually runs with the property. But that language did not actually occur within our ordinance. So what we're doing is we're adding that language into the ordinance, so it's actually codified as part of the, uh, the city zoning ordinances as it relates to the duration of permits and approvals.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from council? Hearing none, is there any public input on this ordinance? Does anyone wish to comment on ordinance two thousand twenty-five dash thirteen? Is there any public input on ordinance two thousand twenty-five dash thirteen, an ordinance amending chapter seven, special use permit? Roll call, please.
Counselor Geisler.
Aye.
Counselor Jelly.
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Counselor Peterson.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Next are resolutions. Resolution two thousand twenty-five dash nine-two, resolution approving final planned unit development for Sumas Construction Development. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Counselor Geisler to approve, is there a second?
All second.
Second by Counselor Peterson. Mr. Mulder, should we have Mr. Johnson address this also?
Great, thank you again, Mr. Mayor. So before us, this is a final planned unit development, uh, by Sumas Construction for the construction, a lot of constructions, don't worry, for the construction of a thirty-five unit, three-story apartment building. This is located in the southwest quadrant of Arrowhead Road and Stevner Road. Um, as we mentioned, uh, this has been through, uh, planning and zoning, both from a preliminary standpoint and a final. Uh, obviously council heard the preliminary about this, uh, earlier this year. So just to give a brief recap for the people in the audience here as well, this is an eight-point-nine acre property, once again, in that southwest corner of Arrowhead and Stevner. Uh, there's generally a large wetland complex that's located on the east side of the property. Uh, there's essentially about, um, six acres of wetland within that quadrant and that area. There is what we call upland area down in that southwest corner and along the western property line. Uh, that's where the applicant is proposing to construct a private driveway that'll run into this proposed development with that apartment being located down in that southwest corner of the, um, of the site that way. Uh, the building's approximately forty-three feet in height, and it's going to be made of a mixture of one and two-bedroom apartments, essentially e- equally spaced out that way. Uh, the sizes range generally from six-hundred-and-seventy-five to one-thousand-ten square feet. Uh, as part of the parking for this, applicant is proposing fifty-two surface parking spaces as well as eighteen garages associated with this. Uh, it's part of a planned unit development. It speaks to public benefit and, uh, what an applicant would be proposing for that. In the case of, uh, this proposal before us, uh, the applicant is proposing, uh, these community gardens on the, uh, eastern side of the driveway as you come in. Uh, these, these gardens are open not only to, uh, residents of the proposed building, but also the general public as well. They would just coordinate with the office manager on the, essentially, um, uh, be able to use, utilize one of the garden spaces and the relevant tools, watering, et cetera, at that point. Um, there was a, uh, for the final planned unit development, uh, that came before the Planning and Zoning Commission back in May. Uh, the applicant, uh, had asked for a two-week continuance associated with that before it came to city council because they wanted the opportunity to meet with other property owners, particularly in the, um, the Hartwoods Development just over to the west of that, as well as one of the, uh, property owners that directly abutted the driveway coming in. Uh, the applicant has, uh, uh, basically discussed with them, uh, the ability to add some other certain features to this, particularly some very tall fences to potentially, uh, screen out view sheds into the property as well as potential headlights. I believe there's also been some discussions with the private property owner about planting trees within that private property as well. Uh, lastly, one of the other, uh, concerns that was raised by the public was the location of the trash enclosure, which originally was on this, the western side of the parking lot, closest to the neighbors. Uh, the applicant has switched, uh, since switched that to the eastern side of the parking lot away from those residents to, uh, basically, uh, uh, work with them on that location that way. As I mentioned, there's, uh, been a lot of, uh, back and forth from the plan standpoint, uh, that the applicant has, um, generally, uh, uh, addressed concerns associated with residents of Hartwoods here as well. Um, this property is approximately about a hundred-and-seventy-five feet from the nearest resident, uh, associated with the Hartwoods Development. And as part of that, they're also providing landscape screening generally along the western and the southwest corner of the site that way.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Is there any public input on this resolution? If so, please step forward to the podium and state your name and address.
I'm John Monti, forty-two eighty Hartwood. And, uh, my co- my communication most recently has been with Windsor Engineers regarding the, the screening or the fence and also the planting of trees. And I'm assuming based on correspondence, I don't know whether they've discussed this yet or not, but I would like, uh, Jesse at least to talk about that. I'm gonna, under the, understanding right now, it'll be nine feet tall and it'll extend a hundred-and-thirty feet down the property line and trees planted on my property below that. So I don't know if anybody here has heard that or not.
Are you able to speak to that, Mr. Johnson?
That is my understanding with conversations with both the applicant as well as their engineer, that there have been basically either discussions that way as far as actually seeing physical agreements. I've not seen those. Uh, I believe maybe Mr. Sumas could, could speak those at, when his time comes as well. But I have, uh, it's my understanding that they've worked both with the gentleman before us as well as a property owner of one of the Jackson Homes that directly abuts that driveway with the construction of a nine-foot tall fence along that portion as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure before there's any vote that this is discussed and approved because I need that, yeah.
Thank you. Is there any other public discussion at this time? If so, if so, please step up to the podium and start with your name and address.
My name is Inez Chandler, four-nine-two-eight West Arrowhead Road. So we are the property right next to the apartments. And two, we just wanna, like, that the fence, the nine-foot fence is gonna be built for our privacy and trees gonna be planted. That's it.
Thank you. Would like to speak to the council, please start with your name and address at the podium.
Hi, my name is Debbie Anderson, and I live at four-two-eight-six Hartwood Lane. I'm one of the two homes that is probably most directly influenced, uh, by this apartment building. And, uh, it, it has become evident that it's probably gonna be built. Um, it's unfortunate that a compromise couldn't have been made. In other words, maybe a two-story instead of three, smaller unit or a couple of twin homes. However, um, I have to say that the, Mr. Sumas has been very forthcoming in working with us to adjust the shocks to our property, the nine-foot fences and the trees. His cooperation is appreciated. I guess the reason I want to speak today is in the future, as, as the apartment house is being built, I'm hoping that if we have concerns about, um, intrusion or interference on the quality of our established neighborhood, that we will be listened to. I think we will. But I'm just, I want to keep that line of communication open. I know most recently, there was a problem with some of the workers working on the property, parking their cars on the sidewalk. Um, and that was addressed immediately. And, um, I just want to cra- congratulate, I guess it was the police force that did that. I'm not sure who did. But if in the future, if there's any, I don't want to use the word threat, but you know, intrusion on the quality of our neighborhood, I hope that you will listen to our concerns as you have in the past. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, this time to designate who to contact in staff. If there are any problems, would that be Mr. Johnson and Mr. Wicklund?
That'd be typically the spot where you would just talk to Community Development Department.
And then if, uh, that isn't, uh, possible to Mr. Wicklund?
Yes.
So those are the two people, the gentleman over here. Anyone else wish to speak to the council at this time?
Jesse Sumas, forty-three, twenty-three Levake. Uh, my family and I are hopefully going to be the builders and the owners of this and manage it. Um, I just want to let you guys know that, um, I think we started this in February is our first meeting, and I've given my phone number out to everyone in Hartwood Lane and anybody affected. And, uh, call me anytime. I've said this at the, at the planning and zoning. Um, I've had three people call me. Debbie Anderson, John Monti, and the Chancellors. And I've met with all three of them. Have no problem meeting with everybody, uh, in the future. I feel like we've done our part. Um, the city says that you can only have a six-and-a-half-foot fence unless engineered. I promised John I'd put up a nine-foot, and I got it engineered. Um, same with Chancellors. We're gonna go a hundred-and-thirty feet from my corner, three feet on my property is which, I believe, the fence, yeah, is supposed to be three feet on my property. So I will go a hundred-and-thirty feet down on the south side, which John lives on, and then I will be going three-hundred feet down from the road, uh, to the back of Chandler's property. That's it, we agreed on that, nine feet hall, nine feet tall. Um, like I said, we've got it engineered. Uh, I'm assuming it's gonna be approved with the city because that's what they told me we had to go with, is, uh, an engineering on it. And, uh, yeah, uh, like I said, I've had no other phone calls. I would be glad to talk to anybody, I said this at the last meeting. And as far as, uh, problems, to answer Debbie's question, I feel that it'll never be brought to you guys because I'm gonna take care of it. Uh, I stand by my word. And, uh, if you guys have a problem, I would hope you called me first. And, uh, as far as, uh, I looked into a little bit of the apartments in the area, uh, in Duluth, Herman Town. And apartment living is, you hardly, from what I was told, I've asked a lot of people now who own them, uh, they hardly see the tenants. They just sit and they come and go, and that's about it. They're not outside, that's what they do. I don't live in an apartment, but they don't get out much. You don't see them much, they come and they go, that's about it. So I can't see there being a problem. And, uh, I live a block from there. I mean, call me anytime, you guys have my number. And if there is a problem, I'll take care of it. So I don't ever expect it to go to you guys because it won't go that far. So, um, that's it. Hopefully, uh, we can work forward and work together and continue on. Um, we're super excited for it if it gets passed, and, uh, we're ready to go. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to the council about this resolution? Last opportunity for public discussion on resolution two thousand twenty-five dash nine-two. With no one coming forward, I'd ask for a roll call.
Counselor Peterson.
Aye.
Counselor Geisler.
Aye.
Counselor Jelly.
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Nay.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Next is resolution two thousand twenty-five dash nine-three, resolution approving a lease agreement with the Heiner Homes Designs LLC. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Counselor LeBlanc, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Geisler, Mr. Mulder.
Heiner Homes has been a, uh, tenant in the, uh, old city hall for a number of years as a sublease to the Arrowhead Builders. With the recent, um, reworking of the lease with Arrowhead Builders, um, Heiner Homes is gonna lease up with us directly. Um, this is just for two office spaces, um, and it's for thirteen months through June of twenty-twenty-six.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council?
Just one quick question, does it run, is that the Arrowhead Builders through that same timeframe?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from council? Is there any public comment on this resolution? Do we have any public comment on resolution two thousand twenty-five dash nine-three? Any public input on the resolution approving a lease agreement with the Heiner Homes Designs LLC? Roll call, please.
Counselor Jelly.
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Counselor Peterson.
Aye.
Counselor Geisler.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Next is resolution two thousand twenty-five dash nine-four, resolution adopting performance measures. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Jelly, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Geisler. Mr. Mulder, should we have Mr. Wicklund address this?
Yes, please.
All right, thank you, Mayor and Council, for, uh, the past several years. Since twenty-eighteen, we've, uh, executed the annual community survey, uh, and we just wrapped it up again. Uh, the results from it will be posted on the website, uh, in the coming days. Um, but overall, that we can be pleased that we, uh, maintain an incredible level of safety in our community that kind of permeates from a lot of different, uh, areas, especially our public safety folks. And that the areas where we've chosen to focus, and that's been driven by resident feedback, areas like streets and parks and those types of maintenance, we've seen those numbers rise over time. Uh, we get a small bit of local government aid that gets attached to this, so there's a little financial remuneration for our efforts, but the bigger part is to have those year-over-year comparatives to make sure that we're headed in the right direction, and it seems so again.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from council? I thank you for your hard work on this. Uh, it's valuable insight into our service to the community. Do we have any public input on this resolution? Do we have any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-five dash nine-four? Any public input on the resolution adopting performance measures? Roll call, please.
Counselor Peterson.
Aye.
Counselor Geisler.
Aye.
Counselor Jelly.
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Next is resolution two thousand twenty-five dash nine-five, resolution approving pay request number twelve for the North Star Ford Arena to Kraus Anderson Construction Company in the amount of one million, one-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand, thirty-three dollars and twenty-eight cents. Do we have a motion?
All move to approve.
Motion by Counselor Geisler, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor LeBlanc. Mr. Mulder.
This is for the work that was done in May. Um, the pay request was delayed two, uh, weeks because of the Memorial Day holiday.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Is there any public input on this resolution? Any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-five dash nine-five? Any public input on the resolution approving pay request number twelve for the North Star Ford Arena? Roll call, please.
Counselor Jelly.
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Counselor Peterson.
Aye.
Counselor Geisler.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Next is resolution two thousand twenty-five dash ninety-six, resolution authorizing and directing mayor and city clerk to execute and deliver an agreement for professional services with Bolton and Menk Incorporated, city engineering services for the road improvement of Lightning Drive and Thunder Chief Lane, including sanitary sewer extension and other infrastructure improvements and trail extension in section fourteen. Do we have a motion, a motion? References.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Jelly to approve, is there a second?
All second.
Second by Counselor Peterson. Mr. Mulder?
So two weeks ago, you ordered the project to reconstruct Lightning Drive, Thunder Chief Lane, Gatchel, water and sewer in Gatchel and also the the trail and sewer pipe across from Stebner almost to Levake. We went out for proposals for engineering services. We had two proposals. One from Bolton and Menk, one from Northern Consulting Engineers. The city staff is recommending that we enter into a contract with Bolton and Menk. The approximate cost is six hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars. As you recall, this is about a ten million dollar project. The plan or kind of schedule at this point is for us to do the design work between now and the end of the year so that we could go up for bed early in the first part of twenty-twenty-six, start construction in twenty-twenty-six, but likely wouldn't finish construction until twenty-twenty-seven.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Is there any public input on this resolution? Any public input on Resolution two thousand twenty-five-nine-six? Is there any public input on the resolution authorizing a agreement for professional services with Bolton and Menk in regarding road improvement of Lightning Drive, Thunder Chief Lane, including sanitary sewer extension and other infrastructure improvements and trail extension? Roll call, please.
Counselor Peterson?
Aye.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Counselor Jelly?
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Next is Resolution two thousand twenty-five-nine-seven. Resolution authorizing and directing mayor and city clerk to execute and deliver an agreement for material testing services for street improvement district number four fifty-two, Lightning Drive and Thunder Chief Lane, including sanitary sewer extension and other infrastructure improvements in section fourteen. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Geisler to approve. Is there a second?
All second.
Second by Counselor Peterson. Mr. Mulder?
As part of the project that you ordered two weeks ago, we want to start the process of getting soil borings along the route of the improvements, particularly in Gatchel Road, just to see what kind of material that we're going to have to deal with in rebuilding that road. But then also in terms of rock and wetland issues relative to putting a sewer pipe across that section. The contract amount is for about fifty-two thousand eight forty. We have a standing professional agreement with Braun. This is for geotechnical services, not material testing.
Thank you. The resolution does say material testing.
It does, but that's.
Change that to geotechnical services. Counselors Geisler and Peterson, are you okay with that change to the motion and second?
Yes.
Yes, I am.
Any questions or comments from council? Is there any public input on this resolution? Do we have any public input on Resolution two thousand twenty-five-nine-seven? Any public input on a resolution on a agreement for geotechnical services for street improvement district number four fifty-two? Roll call, please.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Counselor Jelly?
Aye.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Counselor Peterson?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Resolution two thousand twenty-five-nine-eight. Resolution accepting large specific project scoping document and authorizing the preparation of the draft alternative urban area wide review, AUAR document for the section thirty-one Herman Town Industrial Project. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Well, I think we have Counselor Peterson got that in first. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Counselor Jelly. Mr. Mulder?
Let's have Community Development Director Eric Johnson, who's kind of been leading this.
Mr. Johnson?
Great. Thank you again, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. What this is, it's basically a couple of different steps here. So a large, specific project scoping document was prepared by Kim Lee Horn earlier this year. It was published to the Environmental Quality Board in May of twenty-twenty-five. That document looked at the environmental review and essentially laying out the groundwork or framework of how an AUAR would go forward. So this is an area-wide review of three hundred and ninety-five acres and upwards of one point eight million square feet of light industrial buildings. So the city is the RGU or the regulatory government unit, received two public comments associated with that scoping document, which we have since passed on to Kim Lee Horn. So the next step would now be the ordering of the alternative urban area wide review or the AUAR, which will delve deeper into those items that were identified as part of that scoping document, looking essentially at the environmental aspects of the project. So the AUAR actually will be expanded to four hundred and three acres. And it's located in that southwest corner of the city within the section thirty-one. Lastly, it's anticipated that the AUAR would take about two to three months to to go through that work. It'll also once again be published in the EQB for public comment. And eventually will come before the city council, perhaps in September of twenty-five for their ultimate review and perhaps approval at that point.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from council? Is there any public input on this resolution? Any public input on Resolution two thousand twenty-five-nine-eight? Any public input on the resolution accepting large, specific project scoping document and authorizing the preparation of a draft alternative urban area wide review document? Roll call, please.
Counselor Jelly?
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Counselor Peterson?
Aye.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Next is Resolution two thousand twenty-five-nine-nine. Resolution approving an agreement for consulting services to provide review of an alternative urban area wide review, AUAR with Braun Intertech Corporation in an amount not to exceed twenty thousand dollars. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Geisler to approve. Do we have a second?
All second that.
Second by Counselor Peterson. Mr. Mulder?
Let's have Community Development Director Eric Johnson talk about this one as well.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you again, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. So during that large scoping document that was prepared earlier this year, the city engaged Braun Intertech as its agent to review and comment on that scoping document. So what we're looking to do is continue their services as this AUAR is being performed. So what they would do is Braun would conduct third-party technical review of that document in accordance with the EQB requirements. What they're going to also do is distribute environmental review documents. How they're going to compile and review all public comments received as part of that AUAR process. Prepare public comment associated with it. Once again, they'll also review the aspects associated with the AUAR and refer those back to Kim Lee Horn as the agent preparing those. And then lastly, the ability to attend meetings as needed on a as-needed basis.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from council?
So is anyone from staff? Are we reviewing the reviewer? So I guess if if Braun misses something and it ends up costing the city down the road, does Braun get held accountable for that?
Two things. Hypothetically is that maybe, but they will have errors and omissions policy, things like that. But also our own staff will be watching that process as well. Both Eric and Chad will watch to make sure that all of the issues that are being addressed.
Follow-up question. If Eric and Chad are reviewing the reviewers, why are we paying the reviewer?
So, is one of the few basically firms in this area that's actually expert in the fields of this. The city had engaged Braun Intertech when we did our own AUAR for the Hawkland Business Center. Their expertise and staff level well exceeds whatever staff would be able to bring to the table. They're versed in everything from plant species to essentially wind, air, soils, all that sort of information. Different scientists, geologists that they have on staff are able to review those documents and really delve deep into those things. As part of that, the scoping document process prior, we had a number of work sessions online where it was ourselves, Kim Lee Horn, Braun Intertech, all involved in that, going through essentially a page-by-page review of that of that scoping document. And those same things will happen as part of this AUAR process as well. So once again, Chad and I have a specific areas of expertise. Braun is able to greatly expand on those things and bring that those talents to the table for us.
I guess I'm just, because we've already done this once, right? And maybe it's a scope thing. This is obviously a much larger project than potential project than we did our own AUAR. I just a little confused over why, how we were able to do our own, but then this time we're gonna we're gonna have our own people review someone that we're paying. I just.
When we did our own, we also engaged Braun to review our work. So again, this is a situation where it's like this particular project, given its size
Yeah.
and given the expertise that they bring to the table and that we're going to get reimbursed by the potential developer is why we want to have somebody on board with that.
May I? Counselor LeBlanc, so when we did our own, Braun Intertech essentially did what Kim Lee Horn is going to do. So we paid Braun at that time to to fill out all of the necessary documents, do all the necessary science. In this instance, Kim Lee Horn is going to do that. But because we're the responsible, we're responsible for the document, they're going to review what Kim Lee Horn does. We don't have the technical expertise to look at habitats and, you know, hydrology and all that stuff. That's where Braun would step in. It makes sense on the two?
Yeah, I it all makes sense to me. I'm sorry. I I get it. I'm just struggling with the fact that we're hiring Kim Lee Horn to do this. Right?
No.
They are. They are.
Correct. The development team is hiring Kim Lee Horn. We're hiring Braun to check the development team's work.
I just, I'm confused why we didn't need to hire someone to check Braun's work last time. That's why I'm a little confused. But I'm all for the project, so let's vote.
Any other questions from council? Any public input on this resolution? Can take our time now that it's raining. Any other public input on Resolution two thousand twenty-five-nine-nine? Any public input on the resolution approving an agreement for consulting services with Braun Intertech? Roll call, please.
Counselor Peterson?
Aye.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Counselor Jelly?
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Next is Resolution two thousand twenty-five-one-hundred. Resolution authorizing and directing mayor and city clerk to execute and deliver a reimbursement agreement with Mortenson Development Incorporated. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Counselor LeBlanc to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Jelly. Mr. Mulder?
If we could have Mr. Ranchetti, our economic development director, explain this, that'd be awesome.
Mayor Boucher, counselors, this is a reimbursement agreement similar to an escrow agreement, essentially the same thing. These are common practice in developments to have to have the city, to help the city in covering their costs associated with project due diligence, such as engineering, environmental studies and things of those of that nature. In fact, the environmental ordinance for the city of Herman Town requires that escrow for environmental reviews such as AUAR be created and established and funded. In January, staff executed a one-sided reimbursement agreement for two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars with Mortenson Development to for the study of their light industrial facility, a proposed light industrial facility that covered things like environmental, legal, engineering, water modeling, those kinds of things. Because Mortenson's development is progressing, it's going to involve exploring right-of-way and easement acquisition to get public utilities to the site, which they've agreed to deposit additional funds into escrow to cover those costs. The other, that is the impetus for this for this amendment. The other two things that this addresses is the deposit or sorry, it removes HITA as party to the agreement. We staff doesn't feel that, nor the development team feels that HITA is going to be party in any activities going forward. And then it also amends the terms around invoicing to remove the risk of the gap between the city incurring costs and the developer canceling the agreement. So to the end, continued exploration of this utility extension is to the benefit of the community. And so even if this proposed project does not move forward, the city and the city, the city stands to benefit greatly from continuing on in this relationship in terms of extending the utilities.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Hearing none. Is there any public input on this resolution? Does any member of the public wish to comment on Resolution two thousand twenty-five-one-hundred? Do we have any public input on the resolution authorizing a reimbursement agreement with Mortenson Development Incorporated? Roll call, please.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Counselor Jelly?
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Counselor Peterson?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Next is Resolution two thousand twenty-five-one-on-one. Resolution authorizing and directing mayor and city clerk to execute and deliver an agreement for professional services for right-of-way and easement acquisition services with Kim Lee Horn and Associates Incorporated. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Counselor Geisler. Is there a second?
All second.
Second by Counselor Peterson. Mr. Mulder, is anybody else going to address this?
Again, let's have Chad Ranchetti.
Mr. Ranchetti?
Mayor Boucher, counselors, so this agreement with Kim Lee Horn is to help the city continue to evaluate the possibility of extending public utilities to the new urban services area, which was adopted as a part of the comprehensive plan update in the southwest area of the city. The project, just high level at this point, is we have not started any design, but is identified to include approximately nine and a half miles of eight to ten inch water main along three main sections from Morris Thomas Road to Midway Road. Sorry, Morris Thomas Road from Midway to Levake Road, Midway Road from Morris Thomas Road to trunk one ninety-four, and then also from one ninety-four to US fifty-three. It's also anticipated to include a water tower and a pressure-reducing valve. The sanitary side of the project is twelve thousand lineal feet and up to four lift stations. The project is expected, again, using assumptions because we aren't anywhere into design, but because we want to be as expeditious as possible and do the do the background research necessary to facilitate the right-of-way acquisition. We operated on assumptions in this proposal. And that assumes thirty permanent easements, fifteen temporary easements and five potential fee title acquisitions. Scope of service includes project management, which would be workshops and coordination meetings, quality assurance, quality control, those things. And then the first step, which we will move toward immediately if the council approves, would be property investigations. That includes things like title commitments, property exhibits, summary summaries and preliminary appraisals. And then should the project continue to move forward and we would go to actual easement and right-of-way acquisition, the scope would include negotiation, acquisition services and engineering support and items like that.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council?
And we pay as we go, right? I mean, they do some work and we pay and and only pay for the work that we have done.
Mayor Boucher, Commissioner, or Counselor Geisler, that is correct. We will be invoiced. We will get those invoices and then we will submit them to the development company for approval. Once they're approved, we will code them for payment.
Any other questions?
This is probably more of an adjacent comment, but. This is probably more of an adjacent comment, but have we had any discussion at the city level about how this may affect our rural part of town and maybe zoning to protect that part of town from development per se? Not to say, well, anyway.
Yes, specifically, we are looking at a couple of different potential ordinances that would control and regulate how and when people could connect to these systems, which might be different than, say, the infrastructure that's in place in the urban service area.
Okay. Obviously, with city utilities generally comes development, so I'm just curious if we had been thinking on those lines and...
And we've been preparing some drafts. We've had a little bit of discussion at Utility Commission about that. At some point in time, there'll come the city council as well.
Awesome.
There'll be a large amount of infrastructure that will not be in the municipal service area. And what we're working on is an ordinance that would say, if you're not in the urban service area, you cannot connect.
Oh, okay.
And you certainly cannot develop and connect.
Unless the council lets you.
The city council can do what it wants to do.
With a four-fifths vote. Any other questions or comments from council? Is there any public input on this resolution? Is there any public input on Resolution 2025-101? Any public input on the resolution for an agreement for professional services with Kim Lee Horn and Associates? Roll call, please.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Counselor Jelly?
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Counselor Peterson?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Next is Resolution 2025-102. Resolution receiving bids and approving award of project design and oversight to LHB for the professional design services necessary to implement the repair and upgrade of the Hermantown City Administration and Public Safety Building HVAC systems. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Counselor Geisler to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Peterson. Mr. Mulder?
Brandon Holm, our building official, has been kind of leading this effort, so I'll let him discuss it.
Mayor, council. Before you is the proposal from LHB to provide design services for the HVAC upgrades. Throughout this process, we received bids from two separate companies. Both had roughly commiserate backgrounds, work experiences, experienced personnel involved. So, in this case, the determination came down to cost, with LHB being nearly 50% cheaper than the next closest bidder. So, at this time, it's staff's recommendation that we award them the contract, and then they would, they have said they would be ready to provide us. It's our recommendation, we award them the bid, they will work on the contract, which they said they would have ready for our approval by July 14th.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Thank you. Any public input on this resolution? Any public input on Resolution 2025-102? Any public input on the award of project design and oversight to LHB for design services for the HVAC system in the city administration and public safety building? Roll call, please.
Counselor Peterson?
Aye.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Counselor Jelly?
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Next is Resolution 2025-103. Resolution approving First Amendment to Agreement for Naming Rights. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Counselor LeBlanc. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Peterson. Mr. Mulder?
The city previously entered into an agreement with the school district and with North Star Ford for the purposes of a naming agreement for the arena that's being built. As we made application for payment from the state on the state funding of it, they required several changes. So, and one of them was the term. Instead of 20 years, they were only allowed, unless to do that for 15 years, but we could also renew for five years. But we'll probably do that. And then there's just a couple of other conditions that the state put on. We've shared this with both North Star Ford and with the school district, and they were agreeable to that. So, this would allow us to make an amendment to that agreement and then get reimbursed from the state for the grant that we have from them.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council?
I have one. If it's renewed for another five years, is there additional money that goes along with that?
No, more likely is that if it's not renewed, we will miss out on some money. Because the original amount was for 20 years.
Thank you. Any other comments from council? Any public input on this resolution? Do we have any public input on Resolution 2025-103? Last opportunity for public input for the resolution approving First Amendment to the Agreement for Naming Rights. Roll call, please.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Counselor Peterson?
Aye.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Counselor Jelly?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Next, closed session. A motion to close the meeting of the Hermantown City Council pursuant to Minnesota Statute, Section 13D.05, Subdivision 3B3, to develop or consider offers or counteroffers for the purchase of real property. Following this closed session, the Hermantown City Council will reconvene in an open session. Do we have a motion for the closed session?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Counselor Peterson. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor LeBlanc. All in favor, say aye.
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 Do we need a roll call on that? We will give a couple of minutes for everybody to clear their stuff.